You're welcome.
Good evening. I just see a whole lot of people. Welcome to the Thursday, January 9, 2025 meeting. Being held in the Select Board here, we're with the Cituit Planning Board. We have a post before we begin, I want to say something. I'm not a water doctor, person, but every one of us in this room has lived through a catastrophic bylaw death. And we'll see what happens in California and absolutely capture right away. There will be places for people to live. I have a nephew that works for our kitchen. They try to feed people out there. Anything that you can do, if I, you can pray, pray. If you don't pray for those, you pray. Uh, there, we have a post agenda because there are second, all in faith. Okay, we will start off with our public hearing for the zoning amendment for the annual town meeting, 2025. Here we go. Notice hereby given pursuant to Master of laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, that a public hearing will be held on the Cituit Planning Board on Thursday, January 9, 2025 at six thirty P M in the Select Board hearing room, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Bushing Highway, Cituit, Massachusetts, to consider amendments to the Cituit zoning bylaw as described below. These amendments will appear as articles on the law of the annual town meeting commences in April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. All references below to sections refer to sections of the general bylaw. One amendments, section two hundred definitions. Proposed changes include A, adding new definitions for accessory dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit attached, accessory dwelling unit detached, accessory dwelling unit large, accessory dwelling within, accessory use slash structure of admission, alteration, building, cooking slash kitchen facility, dwelling unit, principal slash primary dwelling, protected use A D U, short-term rental structure, delete existing accessory dwelling definition. Two amendments to section five thirty, accessory dwellings, A D U's proposed can include A amend section five thirty to eliminate sections five thirty point one to five thirty point three and replace them with new sections five thirty point one, five thirty point three to align with the State Affordable Homes Act, including above-not-limited size requirements, large A D U requirements, elimination of owner occupancy requirements, provisions that A D U's not be used for short-term rentals, provisions for site plan review for A D U's, parking requirements and procedures for accessory dwellings. Three amendments to section seven seventy, site plan review. Proposed changes include A amend section seven seventy point two, add a new subsection C for accessory dwelling units as site plan review will be required for buy right accessory dwelling units. The text of the current zoning bylaw, the current zoning map, the complete text of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw are available from section during all hours of business of Cituit Town Hall at the offices of the Town Clerk and Planning Board of Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Bushing Highway, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to start off to tell you that this is probably our most consequential bylaw review sets forty B, which is all we can use enough. Um, so the planning board will be proposing these zoning bylaws and changes to the definitions, accessory dwellings and the site plan review to accommodate the Affordable Homes Act signed into law on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. The goal of the law is to encourage production of accessory dwelling units throughout the Commonwealth to address the housing shortage. The planning board has come up with a bylaw based upon the law of guidance from our town council. On December sixth of twenty twenty-four, E O H L C, it's a child of ours, uh, issued draft regulations for protected use accessory dwellings. As a result of the draft regulations, the planning board has refinements to do on draft zoning bylaws. Several additional definitions need to be added to comply with the regulations. The draft bylaw has state sizing requirements for A D U's, allows restrictions for A D U's to not be short-term rentals, it amends parking requirements, it eliminates owner occupancy requirements, enhanced dimensional setback and site plan review requirements. So now I'm going to show you a powerpoint. I want you to know just that, um, we've had six months to do this. That's all they did was for six months. And then we have the final draft regulations up just yet. So we'll watch, we'll watch our powerpoint, Karen.
Alright, so we've developed, what we tried to do is to give you some basic notes about the accessory dwelling bylaws. Um, next slide. So the governor signed this Affordable Homes into, act into law on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. In a single-family zone district, the law requires buy right zoning for accessory dwelling units with, with the following requirements. Those are in sections seven and eight of the act. It puts caps on parking requirements. It caps the size of an A D U. It does not require owner occupancy of A D U's and approve, and we're allowed to prohibit short-term rentals of A B, A D U's. The state law takes effect on February second, twenty twenty-five. So to conform with the law, Cituit has to, we were choosing to revise our zoning bylaw because we don't want all the stuff that, we don't want everything that the state has. We want to add some other things as well. So we attended many webinars on this, on this, uh, bylaw. The regulations were released on twelve, six, twenty-four. There's public comment period right now, um, for the, for the draft regulations. I believe it ends at January, January tenth tomorrow at midnight. Um, and so we're having our zoning public hearing tonight. So since nineteen eighty-nine, Cituit has approved one hundred thirty-six A D U's ranging in size from four hundred thirty square feet to fifteen twenty square feet. Owner occupancy is required under our current bylaw in the primary or the accessory dwelling with yearly certifications. Currently, the size of an A D U is forty percent of the total square foot of the primary dwelling or seven hundred fifty square feet, whichever is greater. And the A D U needs to be subordinate to the primary dwelling. We require two private off-street parking spaces for each A D U. Detached A D U's must meet required setback building height and yard requirements for primary structure. A D U's must be designed so the appearance of the building remains unchanged as much as possible. A D U's must be a separate housekeeping unit that functions as a separate unit from the primary structure. And only one A D U is allowed within a single-family house or on a lot containing a single-family house. That's our current bylaw now. So right now, the state, state is changing the size requirement. They're changing the size of the A D U to not larger than half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So they're saying that the planning board felt strongly that we have a successful accessory dwelling bylaw before. So the planning board wanted to keep in a provision for a large A D U. A large A D U is no larger than forty percent of the gross square feet of the primary dwelling and greater than nine hundred square feet. So it has to obviously be on a lot that has a large primary dwelling. We're adding several definitions for attached A D U, detached A D U, cooking kitchen facilities. We're putting a restriction on short-term rentals. We're amending the requirements for parking and owner occupancy. No owner occupancy requirement is allowed by the state. Parking, it's one space per A D U and not as required within half a mile of a computer rail station, a ferry terminal, or a bus station. Definition of bus station is a little problematic and we're going to hope that they're going to change it in the final regulations. We have dimensional setbacks that apply. So basically, an A D U needs the same setbacks as a primary dwelling. Special permits remain in effect until they're converted. So we're providing a conversion provision for accessory dwellings. If you already have a special permit and it's allowed to be converted because it's under nine hundred square feet, we're giving a procedure for that. And so that's the basic provisions of the zoning bylaws. Um, we've tried to take into account some of the best things that were in our bylaw already, but yet comply with the state requirements. And, you know, I can review some of the bylaw if you, if, if that's what the, if that's what the audience wants, or we can just go to ask, having board questions and public comment questions.
A pleasure. What would you want?
Do you want me to review any portions of the bylaw? Um, before we start into questions, or do people just want to go right into questions?
I think you have one thing you could review, um, a large A D U. If you could describe.
Alright, so our large A D U, alright, a large.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your name is Heidi Condon. I live at seventy-four Neilgate Street.
Thank you. A large A D U is an accessory dwelling unit that is forty percent of the gross square footage of the primary dwelling and above nine hundred square feet. And it's allowed by special permit.
And is there any limiting number of bedrooms in that?
No, we can't, we're not allowed to limit bedrooms.
Okay.
We're not allowed to limit bedrooms. We're not allowed to limit number of apartments.
Okay.
So it's all based on square footage. It's all based on square footage. And like I said, the large A D U, the planning board, we had seven hundred fifty square feet or forty percent, whichever is greater. The planning board felt strongly that the residents of Cituit still wanted that requirement. So that's why we have the large A D U that is only by special permit.
Thank you.
Yes, your name and address, please.
It's me, Chris Totos, Rumba, Morgan, Five, Cloud, Row. Um, I have two questions.
Okay.
The first is how tall can it be? Can we multiple levels? And the second question is, why are we taking a requirement of owner occupancy out of the equation as it sounds like? Or allowing people to rent out their houses and their new little houses that we're going to have to get?
That's the state law, the state law.
I thought you said that.
The state.
It was required.
It's required under the state law. So if we want to be in compliance with the state law, we have to do that.
The new state law, Mrs. Rumba. So if anyone coming in right now, you have to have owner occupancy in one of your residences after February second, that goes away. Now, let me, let us tell you that we have put together comments and that is one of our comments that we do not have the common sense of that, but it is the law right now. So we need to abide by what the law says.
And the high, the high restrictions are the same as primary dwelling. However, it must be so, an A D U still has to be subordinate to the primary dwelling. So, you know, an A D U could be two stories, but you know, if you only have a one-story primary dwelling, is that really subordinate? So subordinate has to be taken into account, but high, you, we say this primary dwelling.
And you also said, said that the, um, um, the requirements for how far away from your ranch, um, waters, space as the now, is I think it's fifteen inside.
It depends what zoning district you're in. Depends what zoning district you're in. So I'm building setbacks for an R one, R two, and R three zoning district apply. So some, some of them is twenty-foot rear yard, some of them it's a thirty-foot rear yard, some of it's an eight-foot side yard, some of it's a fifteen-foot side yard. It's whatever zoning district you're in, those same requirements apply. So an A D U cannot go into any of the existing setbacks.
Uh, is there anybody else in the room? Yes, identify yourself with your name and address.
Uh huh, yes. Barbara McFadden. I live at thirty-four Harvard Road. We're a neighborhood of five thousand square foot, ten thousand square foot, four thousand square foot homes. An accessory dwelling by definition won't be accessory dwelling if there's not a homeowner living on the property. That makes no sense to me. And, um, what it means for my neighborhood is it just allows builders to buy up all the ten thousand square foot homes that go for sale, put another house on it, and then put, make them two rentals because now you can only have one house on ten thousand square feet. So it, it, it makes no sense to me that that's happening and that that's any law. Anyway.
So what we're looking at, we don't disagree with you.
Well, how do we stop it?
Aren't we just, how do we stop that? Maybe the way you can.
Right to the legislature.
Yeah.
The state, uh, the state legislature passed the law. That's explicitly in the text. So it's outside of our control.
So every municipality of a certain size has to adhere to that law?
Every municipality.
Every law.
It's a huge mistake.
Well, that, it's going to ruin my neighborhood. We're going to be a colony of apartments in ten, fifteen, twenty years. And that just makes me so sad because I feel like I live in paradise. I love my neighborhood. I love my little house. I love Cituit, but that's going to create a real problem. So tell me what I can do and I'll, I'll fight.
We, we.
And I'll get people, I'll gather the resources that I can to make it not happen that way.
A couple of comments later tomorrow. Tomorrow, okay. Keep in mind, and I've been on this board on and off for years. This new zoning bylaw stinks, in my humble opinion, especially with this idea of not owner occupied, which I think is the biggest mistake that could ever be made. And they're doing it on the mantra of affordable housing. And believe me when I tell you, none of it will be affordable.
Right.
This is not affordable.
Yeah.
It isn't. And so the only way that any of us stop this, if we can, and if anyone's been following the legislature, the fact that they do things behind closed doors and nobody knows who's in the villa till it's past, I don't know what to tell you. It's, you have to call, call, write, email.
Okay.
But it is not in anyone, whether it's the town of Cituit or whether it's Great Barrington, Massachusetts, it's not in anyone's best interest for these A D U's to be not, one of the items to be not in. They have to be owner occupied.
Yeah, I know.
They have to be.
So who is that, that we write?
Who do we call? Who do we write?
Senator O'Connor or our, our rep, which is Cardy.
Also, there's a website. The, um, E O H L C has a website for, at, uh, E O L, E O H L C A D U. And there's a comment form on there and they're taking public comments till tomorrow at midnight. There's also a public hearing tomorrow at the state on the regulations, on the draft regulations. So you have until, I believe.
What is the, what is the, again, how I was saying?
Executive office. So its acronym is E O H L C.
C O H L C.
And I'll come right up.
And A, and put A D U, E O H L C A D U. And there should be a form there to, to provide comments for, on the draft regulations.
Just to add to that too, um, January tenth, so I think that's Friday at ten A M. Um, they're also holding a hybrid public hearing. So if you get on H L C website, any member of the public can get into that soon, public hearing. They can make a comment to H L C. Now, H L C can't change the text of the statute that came from the state house to the extent there's issues with the draft regulations that we want to raise. We want to pass it on to H L C to pass off to the lawmakers. Uh, and it says, it's right to get into that public hearing.
That's tomorrow?
Uh, January, that's tomorrow. We have this, this is a fast week.
Yeah, it's tomorrow at ten o'clock. Yes?
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Mary Ann Lewis, eighteen Lighthouse Road, Cituit. Um, I appreciate through you, Madam Chair, uh, to members of the board and Planner and to the audience. Cituit, like every other community across the state and really across the country at this point, has a housing shortage. Um, it's, this town is getting very expensive for our children to buy into, buy homes. Our seniors are being priced out of it. And so the policy purpose for this, um, law by the state was to try to address some of this and encourage adding housing units to our inventory. And Cituit needs to do that, in my opinion, as much as any other community across the state and across the country. And this is one of the ways in which we can do it if we make it affordable for our homeowners, taxpayers, and members of this community to do. I think, I applaud everyone's efforts in this regard, and I know we were under a shortened timeframe. But if, we are in a crisis at this point by anyone's account. And so I don't think that we should impose draft regulations that are in a hurry, hastened, maybe prior to the state, which their draft regulations will come out after, shortly after their commentary, a public commentary, um, concludes tomorrow. To alleviate your concerns, ma'am, Cituit, the last huge zoning change we did probably was in the fifties when we went from five thousand square foot lots to ten thousand square foot lots. So to your point, fear not that A D U's are going to be allowed on five thousand square foot lots. According to the state law, they are not. I don't know if anyone disagrees with me. That's my reading of the statute. Um, to the extent that we are operating or, or doing any of this sort of out of fear, what we think might happen in terms of owner occupancy, I don't subscribe to that concern or fear. There are certainly, and I think with today's modern day tools, we could probably do like a geo-mapping to see how many lots are even eligible to do A D U's based on zoning and dimensions. I don't think that would be that difficult to do. Don't ask me because I'm, I'm not that apt at, uh, at I T. Um, in addition to whether or not someone has the actual space to do it, then the question becomes, is it practical in terms of how their house is set up on their lot? So assuming you're in R three, residential zoning three, and you have a ten thousand square foot lot and your house sits smack in the middle of it, you know, you're probably not likely going to add an accessory dwelling unit to that component. So again, I would encourage us to pump the brakes, not operate out of fear, and think about this in a rational manner that's based on facts. So I did have the opportunity under a hastened calendar as well uh, to review some of what the board is proposing. And I have some concerns about what we have to date drafted. And again, I would encourage us to slow down, encourage more community participation, especially since the state hasn't, um, completed their draft regulations yet. And post it in a manner that maybe reaches a broader audience that can be done pretty easily. I, I don't subscribe to any social media outlets, but lots of people do on Cituit monthly. I know that all the legal requirements have been met in terms of posting on your own website, but sometimes folks don't know to go there or, you know, there are other methods I think we can do in a manner that, um, might be cost effective. But the biggest prohibition and prohibited and, um, allowed regulations and restrictions that the state's going to allow the municipalities to do, standard will be reasonableness. And, you know, that hasn't quite been defined with all its boundaries. However, they have made some suggestions about what constitutes reasonableness and what doesn't constitute reasonableness. And one of the things they cite is excessive cost to the homeowner to build because when you think about it in those terms, that defeats the very purpose why this policy is landing on all of our laps, which is to create more housing. And I think, and again, I think most people will agree that Cituit needs different types of additional housing stock. We need short-term housing stock. We have no hotels in this town. So when folks, well, we went in, we didn't even in, we have no hotels. But, um, you know, this town, like you said, we live in paradise. Um, and lots of people come here to celebrate milestones that make life worth living. Weddings and receptions and graduations. And if we limit short-term rentals to under thirty-one days, those economic dollars are going to negatively impact our small businesses in our community, in our harbor, that rely heavily on seasonal tourism.
So can I start it right there? Short-term rentals as it's defined is in the legislation?
Correct.
Yeah.
But under your, well, the proposed regulations to date, you limit short-term rentals to not less than thirty-one days.
That's what the state says.
No, that's what section, um, page six
We're limiting.
In red, section three.
Because our bylaw is limiting short-term rentals because the state law says that we can limit short-term rentals. And the planning board felt that that was important. So, you know, if we're hearing tonight that people might not want that, then that we'll take that under consideration.
Okay, again, I'm addressing the board in this public comment about what we think of the proposed draft regulation. And I think that the short, limiting short-term rentals to not less than thirty-one days is, is a very negative impact to this town. Um, the, that section also limits not, not only the short-term rentals for the A D U, but for the primary residents beside it. Now, I know it's not an owner occupancy requirement. However, I suspect, and I could be wrong, you will know in a few years, that most people are going to be owner occupied and they're not going to put in a budget troublesome short-term rentals to aggravate themselves more than anybody else because they're going to be the closest to them. Again, I think it's a necessary housing component that we need to add to our inventory. Also, I think it's necessary that families want to keep in-laws together. Young people that can't afford to, their parents might want to build an A D U. Folks that have elderly parents that want to have their parents who can't afford to stay in this town anymore, stay next door. In order, without any additional or excessive fees, that, that new draft regulations and we're going to have to watch this, folks. It's probably a quarter of a million dollars for someone to make that investment in an A D U. Let's assume for a moment, folks make that investment, they want to put their parents in there, and their parents pass. Now they might want to recoup some of that financial investment on a short-term rental. I don't think we should eliminate the possibility to do that. And these current regulation folks, on page six, does exactly that. And so I would ask and encourage everyone to really rethink that. For the folks who live in neighborhoods who are currently bothered by primary residents, nothing to do with A D U's, that are bothered by, you know, short-term rentals, I would say that this doesn't solve that. So, you know, we either sort of have to make it, I think, the same across all types of residential housing. And that, I think, is pretty clear in what the state is saying. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. You can't start imposing a bunch of unnecessary, unreasonable, reasonableness is the test on A D U's that don't apply to primary dwellings. Which leads me to my next point, uh, which is in the final, um, not the final, I'm sorry. My printer was on the blink. So, page eight in red, under, um, five thirty. My printer was on the blink, so, page eight in red, under, um, five thirty point three application procedures. Again, page eight, folks, um, in red. It says, the last sentence of section C, "The public hearing shall consider screening parking and bulkened height of accessory dwelling unit in their vicinity." Which means that this Board would have unfettered mandated directive to impose some type of their imprint on that ADU. And my issue with that, as I see it, is that if you meet, if you're building a primary residence and you meet the setbacks of a primary dwelling, you get a building permit. Plenty more can't come in and tell you to put up a fence for your neighbor, erect four evergreen trees, or anything else. Those things all add to excessive and unreasonable expense, in my opinion. I do not think, as a taxpayer, we should give anyone that unfettered discretion, and all due respect to the Board. I know your work hard and I appreciate your service, I really do. But I don't think, I think that can be a runaway train that we do not want to empower any, um, any, anyone to do. And I don't think that the, that the courts or the state would consider that, even the executive branch, well, the judicial branch, don't think that they would consider that reasonable. Um, I had two other things, and then I won't continue to hog the stage here. And I, again, I appreciate everyone's indulgence. And I'm happy, which I've offered to Tom Planner before, I am an attorney, and I have offered pro bono to be part of this discussion, because I think it's an important discussion. Um, and I think that some sort of task committee or subcommittee should be formed that includes someone from the real estate sector, or from the Situate Chamber of Commerce, or the Locksman's Association, or a senior, or maybe someone that's, you know, a couple of years out of college trying to buy into a house, so that we get a broader perspective about what some of those concerns are in, you know, from a firsthand knowledge. Um, the other thing that concerns me about the drafts, and again, there are many, it's a lot to unpack. I'm just focusing on a couple tonight, and I hope we have the opportunity to continue the discussion. Um, on page two in red, um, again, there's a new definition adding to our bylaws, which talks about cooking and kitchen facility. Now, we currently don't define what cooking is, but the state law and our laws are very clear that what constitutes dwelling comprises of three components, and must contain all three. That's the difference in law between and or, sanitary, sleeping, and cooking. So, the question is, what constitutes cooking? Under this proposed new draft, or bylaw draft, no pun intended, I feel like everything and the kitchen sink was thrown in here. So, I'm, I don't have a reputation to be a good cook or to be a cooker, but one thing I have never attempted to do, even in my, um, in my time, is to cook in a refrigerator. And again, words matter when you're codifying bylaws, which in effect become laws. And what it says is that including but not limited to food preparation, sink, oven, stove, refrigerator, surface for cooking, preparation, and serving of food, washing of utensils, and disposal of waste product. My concern with this is if you have a space above your garage, you have something in your cellar, and you don't have a stove in it, but you have a little wet fire in it, and maybe you Airbnb it a couple of nights of summer to help pay the taxes and are going nowhere but up, they're going to deem this an accessory dwelling unit. And along with that comes fees, taxes, and increased property assessment and, and property tax. So, I think, I don't think anyone reasonably could say that a refrigerator constitutes a cooking facility. And I understand why the Board may have been prompted to define cooking, but this misses the mark, in my opinion, by a long shot.
Uh, thank you for your opinion. I.
Am I cut off already?
No, but I, but I know you don't, and, and please understand that as we sit here for a long time, and, um, why, why in particular, there is inserted one accessory dwelling limits, has everything to do with insurance, has everything to do with health and safety, and has everything to do with making sure that we know what's in that house so that the police and firemen, they, they know. So, I can understand that there is some discretion, there's been a lot of trouble among us, and we will take your opinion as well while we have public hearings. Uh, what's the message? And so, I mean, I hear what you want to say. So, I know where your narrative is going, I absolutely understand what you're trying to say. But can I see if there's anybody else that wants to add?
When we put the ADU, the initial ADU, on the books that we made eighties, and have we defined it at every time, it was to protect the town of Situate, because there were so many. I'm, I don't want to call it unlawful, but so many accessory apartments that nobody knew about. And it was becoming a huge, huge problem. And so, we decided to legitimize it. And there were still a ton of them out there. There were still a lot of them running around, now, we can't focus, but we, but as Chair said, and it's true, we, it's about health and safety. It's making sure that all of these things meet the rules of regulations. And instead, really, and code, they all are. I mean, you don't want to put somebody in the basement, one way out, if something happens, boom, you've got a problem.
That's, it's really for our own health and safety.
Right. And one of your comments was in regards to the short-term rentals. And as a Board, I, we thought, like, if the state wants more housing, short-term rentals does not do that for people. Doesn't get any more housing, because those are just rentals for, for envisioning. So, if it's an Airbnb, that's not providing any housing for any young person or any older person who's trying to buy in Situate. It's just, it's a way for someone to even make money, but it is not a way, it doesn't offer any more housing to the town. And, and the other thing is, we have residents, um, town, we just finished an entire huge bylaw for Green Bush, North Situate, and we have a lot more housing, um, that has already been built in Green Bush. And, I mean, you might, I don't know.
And several projects approved, really.
We have several projects approved that are built that, we're just going to add another. I mean, you might have a number of comments on this.
I'll have a number, but we have several projects.
But we have already added tremendous amount of improvements to this town that we did not have. We might add that.
And it's coming in North Situate as well.
Can I just finish up? I'm sorry.
North Situate has a number coming on board as well.
Could I just finish up? Thank you very much. So, um, to your, to your point, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. So, you know, I think the town could be well-served by providing additional housing inventory that is short-term and ones at long-term. And I suspect people that are doing ADUs will use them for both. So, I don't think they're inconsistent arguments. The other thing I would say is, the, the MTA Communities Act, which, you know, mandated, you know, adding housing, the Supreme, the Supreme Judicial Court just last night helped held the state's authority to do that. And so, again, I would caution us in moving forward in terms of reasonableness. It's, it's an indicator, I think, foreshadowing that where the courts are going to come down on this as well. And, you know, for one taxpayer, I would prefer three hundred and fifty additional ADUs as opposed to three hundred and fifty units in apartment building in North Situate. But, you know, again, people's opinions can differ on that. I will say that, like, the Board of Selectmen just a few weeks ago increased the sewer hookup fee for ADUs. They increased it by a hundred percent. I don't think that's going to fly as reasonable either, because they do talk about excessive costs. And that is, in my opinion, an excessive cost. So, um, I appreciate the time. I just wanted to finish what I had to say and encourage other folks to chime in.
I'd demand that, please.
Uh, Shane Melvin, seventy-nine year old, so I'd like to reiterate, thank you for all the work you do. I know most of us have examples, so, thank you for that. And, um.
No, I'm telling you, public services are a privilege.
So, that's the thing. So, I do recognize that you, that the state has imposed new laws, and that's something that you guys have been throwing on your plate. I think adding more laws to the things that have already been thrown on your plate is something that we should caution. I agree, let's see what the state comes down. It's great that we're getting ahead of it. But adding things on top of what it is, and I think the key is that short-term, uh, the short-term rental kind of, is, I can see being problematic. I agree that there is one hotel, we'll agree that there's one hotel. But, um, I don't like seeing empty storefronts in the harbor as much as anyone else does. And the tourists spend more money than the residents do when they come here in our season. I think there's no other place to stay. And then I agree that there is an affordable, uh, housing crisis. But I think that things don't add up in the bylaws the way they're written. So, if you, you have to have long-term rentals, but that long-term rental doesn't have to have a stove. So, who is going to rent a place for a year that you can't, okay? The refrigerator is the only place you can house food or food. So, it seems like there's some things that are incongruent between those two. So, if you're going to have laws that were scripted to above thirty-one days, but that have laws that you don't need a stove, that seems like you kind of have to pick one or the other. And I would just, you know, I think defaulting to what the state is passing, and there are all these things that are trying to have more affordable housing, that's great, let's all adhere to those. Adding regulations on top of that seems like we might be setting ourselves up for other rent conditions.
At that point, I think the unit, the person that owns it, if they wanted to do a long-term rental, they probably still could. But we just don't want people to say, "It's not an ADU, I'm renting it out," like they've got pretty much a place to book. You have a place to book. It's a much, it's a.
So, I just wanted to, um, clarify a couple of things. First of all, we've been working with town council throughout this whole process. So, we have been having legal advice. Right now, town council has advised us to keep some of the things in the bylaw until the regs are finalized. So, based on a discussion I had with town council yesterday, this public hearing will be continued tonight, and it will be continued to January twenty-third. It will also be continued on January third till February thirteenth, so that hopefully the regs come out on time by February second, and we can see what the act, what the final regs say. But Situate has a very early town meeting. We're taking, I was supposed to have final wording for the warrant in December. That's not feasible with a bylaw that was just, you know, that the regs are coming out in February. So, we're trying to accommodate the town's timeframe for town meeting and the state's, um, timeframe for the, for the regulations. So, we will continue this public hearing so that we can get the final regs and make changes after the final regs come out for what, you know, some, listening to comments here, listening to what the Board has comments on, and other, and other, you know, departments have reviewed this as well. So, I just wanted to say that now, so that this is not your final chance to say something. And we will always take written comments. You can supply written comments to the planning office, and the Planning Board gets every comment that is sent to our office.
And we advise that, we are not the only people that see this. This goes to every single office in this town, and then we absorb all of those comments, and then, and then try to make something that makes sense to us. And we know the law is very complicated.
I just, yeah, one more statement is the, uh, the, I mean, I live by the water, so I could never finish my basement. But the, uh, the accessory dwelling within seems like if you, it needs to be a little more clearly defined, because I know there's a lot of finished basements in this town that may become accessory dwellings as everything's written right now. And I think, I agree, getting everything above board, not having all this stuff floating around that's accessory dwellings that you don't know about, you're now going to add a thousand, ten thousand accessory dwellings you don't know about if it's free, nine thousand is, or it's a little bit rare.
Well, I mean, an accessory dwelling has to have cooking, sleeping, and sanitation facilities. So, anything that's needed for cooking, it has to be, is in that. And we tried to define what that is, because we have instances where people, they don't put in a stove, and then six months later, they go back and add stove, and we don't know that it's an accessory dwelling unit. And so, we tried to put in, so that it has to include those things and ors of piping, um, or whatever, you know, if you have the gas or electricity, or, or the outlet for the stove. So, that's a big consideration to help make everybody and everything safe.
No, I completely agree. Just speaking of existing structure, you know, there's the risk of existing homeowners having to revert.
And that's, and to, I get the point, but that's not what that section says. If it's a, has a refrigerator in it, it's a dwelling.
I recommend that. Okay, so, I'm, I'm just wondering, it sounds like in the current, uh, that five thousand square foot, um, homeowners on five thousand square feet can have an attached or an in-home accessory dwelling. Is it possible to say, if you live on ten thousand square feet, you can have an attached or live in, um, accessory dwelling? And then on twenty thousand feet, they can do the homeowner thing where you don't have to be there? Because it's putting the onus of this rental property we need on the most densely populated parts of our community. And also, anyway. So, can you change that? If you can't change the law, can you change the requirements to even twelve thousand square feet? That would change, each of each would then be able to do accessory dwellings all they wanted, but they wouldn't be able to put two rentals on a piece of property with no homeowner. Can't do that? Oh, it's such a good idea. Why don't you just look into that? Because that is a good idea for saving the densely pop, because the overall thing that Situate did many years ago was to protect communities like mine, that are so dense already. And then not take advantage of them, which that's going to hurt them immediately that this is instigated. So.
So, this boy is well aware that we'll be first heard about this. I can tell you that, we'll show up, we'll reveal, the first places we die about is exactly where you live. It's going to be Sandy Hills, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be the avenues, and it's going to be where there is sewer. Please be advised that if you're on septic, it's a whole other ballgame of unaccessory dwellings. And I say, you have to, you have to match your, your septic and not your sewer. So, we are well aware, and we have done, I have done, some type of geophysical to see where these would be able to be put. And, you know, I think there's going to be ten thousand of them, I, I really don't. One reason B is that, um, the driving factor behind building anything in Situate is breathe. It costs a lot of money to build stuff here. Um, if you try to tell people it costs too much money, they tell you they cannot afford to build here. That's kind of not our purview. You don't have any say about how much anything costs or how much anything should cost. I will tell you, Miss Oates, that my real issue with this is it is not affordable. The name of the act is the Affordable Homes Act, and there's nothing in there that says that this is a lot of housing you contribute at all. That's my big thing. So, if you want to make it affordable, then make it affordable.
Okay, my last comment is just to say, I have personal, uh, experience with living in a great neighborhood, and then as people die off and start selling their property and people buy and make it rentals, that when rental property becomes dominant in a single-family residence neighborhood, it changes everything. Because, yeah, yeah, just say it. And, and it's not pretty. And, and I think you should do everything you possibly can to save these neighborhoods that are going to be the ones that get screwed by this law. Yeah, just say it.
One of the things I think you need to mind, forty B, forty B didn't work, and it doesn't work, because so many units have to be, meet affordability. A one-bedroom unit, affordable unit, is two thousand dollars a month. That is not affordable by any stretch. And, I mean, we can go back through history, and we could look at the demise of Triple Deckers. We can look at the demise of condominium. we can look at the demise of condominiums, we can look at the demise of so many different things. We have to go forward. Mara here, they were saying, isn't this wonderful, with the MBTA, the Springport, Springport allowed this to stand? But all of the regs have to be redone. They have to be done, and she's going to have some type of emergency provisions, because she wants affordable housing. Damn it, what is affordable? And how can we make it affordable? Because somebody who works for fifteen to twenty-five dollars an hour, there is no seven hundred and fifty-dollar apartment in this town.
Uh, Mario O'Malley, here in Southern Ecton. Based on what you're saying, so I would be one of the examples, um, that Marion had mentioned. My parents, elderly, live in Vegas, tried to bring it back, thought, okay, it might be what we do. They can come and live in our property, probably live another five to six years, if you're lucky, you know? At that point, when they pass, we have, as we own, talked about a two-hundred thousand dollar, if we go cheap, unit, now that we have to pay for, that is now part of our mortgage. My concern with the, the long-term rental is, so, you're talking about affordable housing. Affordable housing, for me, would be able to pay that two-hundred fifty thousand based on short-term rentals for weddings, or, or whatever's happening during the summer season, so that I can pay, I can make that monthly payment that I don't have to sell my property and leave this town, that I love so much. Um, I, would I prefer to have someone there for thirty days or longer? Yes, but there's no guarantee that we're gonna find someone to do that. There's more of a chance I could rent it out for four days. Now, we would be the person that's still on the property, we're not planning on going anywhere. But that, my concern about the long-term thirty day is, is, if it's gonna be affordable, let's keep it affordable for all of us, not just the new people moving in. Like, let's be able to stay in this town, let's be able to pay our bills.
Everybody else who need to go?
Uh, Chris Karsha, one nineteen Stockbridge Road. I've been working with planning board uh, on these regulations. I've been on the capital planning committee for thirteen years, zoning board for four years. So capital, we look at the cost of, what it costs to run the town. My concerns when this ADU thing came up was that the potential impact it just can have on uh, our infrastructure, on our use of our police, and things like that. And the revenue that's generated from an ADU is not the same as a primary dwelling. So you can, you know, you can, you know, increase our population with a two-bedroom ADU without the same uh, tax revenue coming out of it. They can use the school systems, the fire power, or whatnot, and still not paying the same. And then from the, the zoning side, you know, we're kind of, you know, we, you know, look at particularly the character of the town as one of the charges of the zoning. So, looking at this bylaw and, and working on our regulations, it was to be able to protect the character of the town, but still allow this. We're not saying we don't wanna allow ADUs, but we wanna allow it in a controlled fashion that preserves, you know, the look and the nature of Situate while still being able to afford and have the capacity to use everything that's here. But that did that.
We're trying.
Just saying, you know, and, and it's in complement with what the upper level is.
You need to speak to me.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I kind of began suddenly, Corinna, they, is, is there an annual limit to how many ADUs would be approved? Is that one way, we can't limit?
We did at the beginning, and there, there was a, it was, and then it went away. And the affordable ADUs have a limit of twenty-five per year. But we don't have a cap on, um, it's, it's been self-regulating in itself. I mean, I mean, some years you get none, some years you get four or five, some years you get seven.
So you're not getting any?
Well, we're not, it, well, we get them frequently, but we're not, you know, we get them frequently.
And we did have an affordable ADU.
We have it on the books right now.
We have it on the books right now. No one has ever gone forward with it, because the paperwork to make this unit affordable is so onerous that no one's doing it. That is the issue with that one.
Chair Lambert, you have the um.
Are you, are you waiting for me, or?
Yes, we are.
Up, sorry, Linda Ferguson, fifty-seven Kingsway, I just wanted to echo what um, Chris Karsha was saying. I mean, you know, this town is under a water restriction, starting in what, like, January of a year? And if we're all of a sudden gonna add ten thousand units, or whatever you guys are talking about, I can't, I mean, we're gonna have no water. You know, not to mention, if, I'm not on sewer, I have septic, but um, uh, you know, you all of a sudden add a, you know, a, an ADU that houses four people, and now you've added four people times ten thousand to sewer use, I, I just don't know how this is gonna work. I would also comment too, I know people want Airbnbs, I happen to be in the business, and um, you know, well, the summer months, we are jammed. The, the winter months, the, the hotel could close. So it's, you know, the, the idea that you're gonna make a killing, you might for a couple of weekends in the summer. Um, but, but the, the rest of the year, there's over a hundred and fifty or two hundred Airbnbs listed in Situate right now. So I don't know that we necessarily need more Airbnbs in town, um, than we already have. So I, I think keeping that restriction will not only um, help keep the uh, the population down, but it also is, you know, the thirty-day rental will keep the, the neighborhoods at least a little bit removed from the weekend uh, guests that come in and have no buy-in to the town, and no um, uh, no care about whether they're quiet or not, or throwing trash out the window, or whatever. So um, I just, I think that we should keep that thirty-day restriction. Um, and I think we need to think about the, the, what Chris was saying about the impact to our town services, the schools, the water, sewer, and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mary Ann Lewis, quick question, and then I'll know, the hundred and thirty-six units, just to put in perspective also, we have, I believe, over eight thousand uh, single-family homes in the town, or housing units, is that right? Yeah, so I mean, just, you know, so folks have a reference on that. Um, do those hundred and thirty-six count towards our forty-B number?
No, no.
Okay, all right. The answer's no. Don't decapitate me. Well, so, which leads me to my next question, which is, we don't know that yet, actually, whether or not these will count towards it. I don't know how that they, they would.
We know, we know that because.
Do we know that? Okay, all right, so did we, did, did the board as, or did we as a town, comment that we would like them to count towards that? I don't know, do, do we know?
No, that is not part of my comments. That's not part of our comments, and.
I think that might be helpful, and, you know, I'm happy to go on, but from a, you know, from a board, a town perspective, um, you know, that might be helpful, because who knows, they, maybe three hundred towns say that, like, okay, you know?
Like I said, we have an affordable ADU, and it's put on the books as Dr. King, and no one has ever gone forward to do that.
Right, no, I'm, no, I'm just talking about in terms of housing stock, whatever, you know, so. Um, all right, so, I mean, that might be a good thing in terms of our percentages, so it's, it's two sides to that coin. Lastly, on the, on the um, short-term rentals, again, as the draft is proposed, and I can, it, as the draft is uh, written, the proposed draft is written, it doesn't limit the short-term rentals just to ADUs, it limits them on the primary dwelling.
That was a mistake, that was a mistake. So it's always supposed to be eighty years.
All right, well, again, that's why we, we haven't talked about that stuff.
We will change, we will change that.
You, okay, well, when you just said, we're not gonna change anything pending, I was like, concerned about some of that. So um, and then the other thing is, I don't, I don't know if, and again, I know councils on the line or here somewhere, I don't know that they're going to allow restrictions on ADUs that aren't imposed on primary dwellings. I don't think that they're gonna be able, because I, one of the things I read anyway was, basically, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So, in other words, you can't say, we're gonna, we're gonna impose screening or landscaping um, requirements for ADUs that aren't applicable to primary dwellings. So in other words, if you meet the setbacks, planning board can't always take and say, you gotta put up trees or a rock, or whatever. And so I don't know that we can do that on ADUs. I'm not sure that we can have a different set of rules for ADUs that we don't have across the board for all housing deployments.
So we will revisit that, I will go look at that, but we are allowed, under an ADU, because this new bot, this new law is basically saying, the ADUs are protected use, under the Dover amendment, under the Dover amendment, you can, you can regulate certain things. Some of those are parking, some of those are setbacks, some of those are building habits. So we will go back and revisit that.
Yeah, I just, I don't want us, I don't want us to, you know, everyone, and if that's a broader discussion, then we all have to figure out, do we want that restriction on every single residential unit? That's all. So we can't, I don't think that there's, I think it has to be uniform applicating, is my point. One of the other things, and this is something that you could send this to us, about um, notifying people of what's going on. And one of the saddest things that's happened, you do not have a local paper. So, that said, and a lot of people aren't on social media, the coastal marineries, and what page it's written on, and so I don't know what to say. It's word of mouth, call your neighbors, do whatever. But we all do the best we can to try to inform people about what's going on. Yeah, no, and I appreciate the efforts, I was just adding additional suggestion about putting on Situate monthly. Or I don't, give me a stack of paper, I'll pull it to you, it's at the grocery store, or wherever.
I want to ask you, I asked specifically, yeah, the blast we said, John, about this meeting. Are you all here because of that, because of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that works.
Okay. So I went to the town leadership, and I said, we have a really big public hearing, you didn't cover it, you weakly didn't get to talk every, like, and he said, well, I'll send out a blast, I said, thank you, so, that works. Okay, so that works. All right, just make a note on there, thank you.
Maybe we ought, maybe because we have several other public hearings, we ought to continue this public hearing to January twenty-third at six-thirty. And then, you know, we go, if people have comments, we'd be happy to take your comments and write it, or we can go into the office and let us know your comments.
And so if the town can come back again, we'll have another session.
Okay.
Can we set up some type of portal, maybe, like the, like the state did for, you know, people like you, just failure?
We don't have that idea. That happens to have a billion stuff in, not yet.
Yeah, exactly. And again, thank you, I mean, this is a lot to grapple with, and, you know, I appreciate everyone's efforts. Okay, I want to continue the public hearing for the zoning amendments with twenty, twenty-five annual committee until January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty P M. That'll be hybrided, what?
Yes, yes.
I would rather maybe to hybrid.
Six-thirty, six-thirty. Be here, we'll be here.
I'm ready for the words, continue, Wang, please, uh, can you take your conversations over back into the full meeting, thank you.
Okay.
That's why. That that we are, oh, we are, we are. Okay.
Public hearing.
We have a special permit accessory dwelling.
Oh, another one.
But we're not, yeah. This is a continued public hearing.
Hi, I'm Stephen Kirk, thirty-four, still down there, I'm Rock. Um, this is a continuation, as you see from the record, I had to go back, do some homework. Um, a couple of questions related to parking and minor septic change. We also had subsequent to our first meeting, we had our first conservation meeting. So there's some things to report, but I guess um, you tell me, we only start after, obviously, the continuation, you might have questions.
Mr. Kirk, by not getting more proposed considerations, elevations, like to build others, were they to made to us?
Well, the elevations certificate, it's in the original packet. And the elevation associated with the ADU or accessory dwelling, whatever you wanna call it, are on this rendering right here.
He was really looking for something in relation, existing law in relation to. But, I mean, how, I mean.
So, I don't have that number, I can tell you that, if you look at the CAD drawing that I gave you, that the second floor level is indicated here as twenty-five point three. You see that, it's right under the first-story elevation of sixteen point seven. And as I've said, I can offer you the elevation certificate, which is in the original packet, and the elevation related to this rendering of the structure. So, if this is a question of whether or not the size of the accessory dwelling is excessive, let me put out the numbers. The original house has five bedrooms, accessory dwelling has one. The original house has two full bathrooms, accessory dwelling has one. And we have a combined kitchen-living area, where the existing structure has a dining room, kitchen, and living room. It is subordinate, it's less than forty percent of the square footage of the living space. So I don't know what the height is gonna tell you, but if it's a first-floor structure, or if it's a two-story structure, three straight quote. Um, I want to address the parking question, because I know that the first CAD drawing, I, I was pretty lame in addressing that. I took the uh, measurements back to my um, engineering firm, and as you can see here, we've indicated uh, clear to driveway parking spots for five vehicles. Um, if you wanna put them in, my, a buddy neighbor just said that he saw me have twelve cars there once. Probably did. This is a, an organized five-car configuration where no one can be blocked in at any time. And as we are, we're gonna have a four bedroom in the, uh, we're gonna reduce the number of bedrooms in the primary structure to five and four, and we're gonna have one bedroom in the ADU. So I feel we're way on task to meet our requirements. The other thing I want to show you while you're looking at the CAD drawing, is the um, footprint of the accessory dwelling had the uh, leaching field um, crossing under the, the deck by about, about a foot. Um, so we went back to the engineer for the septic, we had to reconfigure the shape of it to bypass any possibility that we would be at any level underneath the structure. Uh, I also want to point out, and I'll apologize in the front, the engineering drawing for the septic does show it as the OH twenty, uh, which would say that the tank is capable of having an automobile parked on it.
H twenty low end.
H twenty low end, yeah, so we're gonna run.
You gotta, uh, we gotta, we gotta confirmation from the Board of Health that they have a plan that says, uh, it is H twenty voting for the distribution tank and the um, and something, something else, that was on the revised um, septic plan. Tank and distribution blocks. Uh, that was really pictured on twelve, thirteen, twenty-four, so, that was uh, that was what um, you needed to know, because it has to be able. So, that was, that was what you needed to know, because it has to be able to be driven over.
I have to be, I'll be right up front with you, that we did come out of our conservation meeting with concern. The designation in our filing indicated that we were on a doom. Hard to imagine that we're on a doom. So, we have hired a firm, Owen Burger, Delisi and Harris, to present our position to the Conservation Commission on the 27th to make sure that we can not move forward and not have that be an obstacle. Whatever we need to do to make sure the conservation is satisfied with our engineering.
No, so that's not our purview. And one, and one affirmation on the dial is not, is nothing typical to anybody else. We all may not open the roof.
I understand. I just want to make sure everyone's informed of some of the challenges that we're working to address. And I, it certainly has a subject matter, it's beyond my, my education, so I didn't hire a firm that has a experience in that area.
Yes, and just for your education, all of that stuff is always shared with us.
Okay. My beautiful wife, Betsy, is still recuperating from her knee surgery. She couldn't make it here today, but she's here in spirit, I think, or I don't think she's out there. She's, Betsy's, we remain steadfast in our commitment to Humrock. We've had this property since 1985. For those who don't remember, we are on the public beach. I spent many mornings cleaning up burned railroad ties off the beach that, that were quite a mess on what is now what is considered public beach domain. But, you know, we'll be able to, with this addition to our property, spend more time there to be more proactive in dealing with issues that come on in the right of way down on the beach. So, I implore you to please stay with us on this process. I respect your opinion on it. And again, I want to make sure it's real clear, this is a passion project of my wife and I.
So, in the, in the interim from the first hearing to this hearing, Mr. Tripp did submit additional information. We got the plan from the Board of Health. You also had two comments submitted, you had comments submitted from Jennifer Smith of the Conservation. And she indicates the project may not meet performance standards for Doom. Projects accessory to an existing structure do not include construction of an accessory dwelling. So, she goes on to say some other stuff about the coastal doom. She's also forwarded to you, which I forwarded to you as well, that the gentleman from DEP says, "Projects accessory to an existing building do not include the construction of an additional dwelling." So, Mr. Tripp has his hands full in conservation. We also had another comment here from Mr. Vaza, Richard Vaza, and he is opposed to the accessory dwelling. I forwarded that comment to you. I know he's in the audience, so we'll let him speak. I think that this accessory dwelling, the primary dwelling is like, I don't know, 1,700 square feet.
1640.
1640. The accessory dwelling is 742 square feet of living space. It is 1,000 gross square feet, because it includes an attic non-habitable for mechanical equipment. So, I would, I would recommend that you judge it subordinate. I would recommend that you approve this accessory dwelling. He needs all permits in order to be able to build. And so, getting through conservation is going to be a tough one. But that's not your domain. Your domain is the accessory dwelling unit. And I think it does meet the requirements of the zoning law.
How many parking spots? Is it four parking spots?
There are four on the side, and then one will be created right in front of the ADU.
You said the beaching field is now, I know that was a concern last time, so that is not under the house at all?
No, it was, we had made a general move from the closest point to Marshville Ave. To the place away from here until that, I don't know the description, but it's on the side of the house. But it left like a, a, a remnant of about a foot that was still under the deck. So, I went back to our engineer, and I said, "You have to fix that. We don't want any coverage over that beaching field." And if the hard rock we're presenting is delivered tonight, within the, in the box, delivery box outside, so the health department has that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience?
Richard Vaza, 22 Marshfield Ave, Adam Chairman and the rest of the board, thank you for speaking to me. As you know, I was before you previously, I'm an immediate brother Steve. We've always had great relationships, so we should do. As I said, when I was here before, the accessory unit is planted between our houses. It's almost the size of, of existing. And my major concern here, you've seen the photos that are sent here, is flooding. And we have a whole new rooftop, you have roof, roof with all this new impervious service, surfaces. And my foundation, as I said before, I have a completely full basement in my house where all my mechanical systems are. And it's mere feet from where it's gonna go, and water's gonna get displaced. And I don't want it in my basement. And he's shown nothing, any, any evidence whatsoever that there, this water is not gonna be redirected or displaced. And that's a major thing on special permit here. And, and as far as zoning, I know we're looking at a plan here that is showing you five parking spaces where the house is going. And I know the Wetlands Protection Act and zoning, they do inter, interlock. So, if you're looking at a plan that is showing parking spaces that can't be built, you know, in my opinion anyway, you can't approve a plan, didn't give a for you this, this distinction. Because this, this project is entirely within the coastal doom and barrier beach. DEP has already governed that this is gonna fall under the barrier beach and doom regulations. The doom regulations specifically state that if there's an existing home already on the property, it does not allow accessory units. In order for the accessory unit to be built on that plan that you're looking at, with the parking spaces going, he has to, there's a plan to remove and replace vegetation. This isn't ordering vegetation wetlands, which is part of the Wetlands Protection Act. The doom beach regulations do not allow replacement and replication. There's no provision for that. So, so unlike if you have a pond, and you say, "I'm gonna take 200 square feet, I'm gonna move it over here." You can't take a doom and its vegetation and say, "I'm gonna take 200 feet and move it over here." There's no regulation in Wetlands Protection, Doom and Barrier Beach, a lot of that provision. So, if you're looking at parking spaces, and I'm saying, "I'm gonna take this and move it over here," that's not a lot. So, simply, if it was a burnout pool that was underneath this home right now, you would not approve, whether it's conservation or not, you'd say, "I'm not gonna sit here like you put it on top of the burn pool." Well, this is a barrier beach coastal doom, it's the same thing. The regulations don't allow it. So, no, they don't even allow the accessory unit. So, I don't think that you should vote on this condition even with conservation.
Well, Mr. Vaza, we can only vote on what is our purview, and I understand the issue we do, we absolutely do. And fortunately or unfortunately for this point, that comes under the purview of conservation. And while they will listen to what we have to say, if we listen to what they have to say, I do not believe that we have the right to deny something that falls out of the purview of conservation. Right?
That's correct. I mean, I, I got a legal opinion.
You got a legal opinion on that, and...
The inboarding of the public.
Well, you're right. I could put a plane in front of you right now, there goes 10 parking spaces. And if you're gonna approve at least 10 parking spaces, and they don't exist, then they don't exist. So, that's conservation, then.
Yeah, so I guess it's so, so green. Mr. Tripp has an uphill battle, there is no doubt about this. However, when it becomes our purview and we have to approve or not approve under what it is that we control, we have been advised that we as a group, as planning board, should approve this. And, you know, I believe it's a, is it a vote, it's a vote here or not?
It's a four-fish vote. Mr. Rabbadia was president of the last hearing, but he did a modeling certification today, so he is eligible to vote. So, it's a four-fish vote. Four men, four members of the planning board have to vote.
And is there any other comment from anybody in the audience?
I'm only gonna add, if I might, we have been aggressive in wanting to have doom barriers, adding Rosa Regosa to our property. We, we covet the property, if anybody would walk up and say yes. And I've had Jen Smith there, and she agrees to what we have done to manage that doom. So, we have a game plan. I've hired an attorney to be able to help us educate on that benefit of making that happen. And I think for this board, looking forward, I just sat through two hours of interest in ADUs. How many of these folks are gonna be coming in here that have some association to a beachfront? So, this is gonna be a regular discussion. I think we have to take this to conservation and let them make the decision on the, on what the status is.
But you have to come to us for approval of an ADU.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to specify the importance of this vote.
Excuse me, Vaza, we've even set the conservation aside. The board is here to talk about flooding concerns. It's after any flooding, and you have to assert that it's not addressed. There's no evidence presented whatsoever that this impervious surface is, like 10 feet from my home, isn't going to cause any change in direction of water or flooding.
Well, that, that would be covered on the, was it notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
So, that would be covered under the Conservation Commission.
It's also one of the board's purview.
For first-hand water.
It's out of special permit, we're gonna be fine.
I would only suggest Mr. Vaza shouldn't have a basement with utilities in it, and a zone, all like he said. And if I were to, if I were to lift my property, which that always exists, the possibility, if he opens up and he grant money out there, he might take a three or five-foot wave to the side of his house. I don't know. I don't know, the pictures that were displayed were from the March 2018 storm, which was the third highest tide type ever recorded, ever recorded in Boston. So, let's put it all in perspective here. I'm just asking, because it's a process.
So, based on, based on the accessory dwelling special permit what's filed, I think the planning board needs to approve it. Now, as part of your conditions, you've always said, "All other permits have to be obtained." So, prior to obtaining the building permit, they have to get whatever other permits they need. If they can't get them, then they don't get a building permit. That, that's the bottom, that's the bottom line. Do you want to say that, Mr. Vaza?
Oh, I understand that, yes. I still, I still think the board has jurisdiction.
Yeah, so I wanted to go back to the, to the, your concern about the flooding, it's right, like that speaks near and dear to my heart. Have you investigated, and I may have missed this, as the town planner said, I was not here for the first meeting. Have you investigated different ways to mitigate any flooding that could happen in major storms? Anything like that could impact your damaged property?
Yes, so if you look at the drawing, and if you look at the original image, there is a very heavy fence that was installed across the front of my existing structure. My plan is to continue that project all the way to the southern lot line, which in effect will help to build material behind it for creating more of a doom, you know, so knocking some of the pressure off the way as they bowl the seawall, when they do bowl the seawall. But it's our commitment to extend that all the way to the southern lot line. It's part of the plan anyway. I'll put it out there, this is, this will be part of our commitment, if you wanna have it.
And that should be part of their notice of intent plan. So, I mean, that's not, that's not our purview.
But you can see it on here, right about where car number one is. You see that jagged?
Yes.
Since, let's, six-inch cedar post with four-by-four rails with three-by-three-inch vessels made out of cedar. That's what we've done so far. And we'll continue that, continue that development for the benefit of my septic system and my neighborhood.
I'm, I'm actually most concerned with it not being approved. The roof is gonna be up right next to the, to a whole lot of roof service, you know? And the, and the new material is gonna have, that they actually put down for the driveway. Now, it's all sand. Now, they wanna remove impervious material, impervious material there. And all that water is gonna get displaced. It's all sand right now. It's gonna go somewhere, and it's gonna add up in my case.
Right now, the plan shows that it's gonna be crushed out.
No, 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 just chill. On top of, on top of the compacted, you mean, what you're talking about.
It's crushed out now, it's gonna be, no, it's shot.
They require the drive over it with a...
Oh, just the distribution box and the...
And the, and the field.
And the, the distribution box and the tank have to be H-20 loaded.
I thought, thought they had it over the field as well.
Not in those type of areas.
So, just to, I mean, conservation, when there's a notice of intent and the whole project is subject to conservation, typically conservation handles stormwater. I mean, I am putting a condition, as a draft condition, that if there's an increase in impervious of over 25%, then a stormwater permit is required, because that's consistent with the stormwater bylaw. I'm hoping that conservation is doing that as part of the notice of intent. Because we, when it's all upland, planning will do a stormwater permit. When it's subject to notice of intent, conservation does the stormwater.
We can also put sister in there. You know, we're respectful, pardon me, but I have no problem with getting control of a problem that exists.
Well, you didn't even talk to me before you started this, so you're gonna do what you're talking.
I want to make a call on finding to fact. One, on April 7th, 2024, Adam and Stephen and Elizabeth Tripp apply for a special permit for an accessory dwelling in a detached structure at the property of 30 Marshfield Avenue. Two, according to the county's accessory records and D, the property of 30 Marshfield Avenue is owned by Stephen and Elizabeth Tripp. Free based on floor plans submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of detached accessory dwelling to be 742 square feet. The attic space will be used for mechanical equipment and is not habitable space and can never be converted to living space. The gross square footage with the uninhabitable space, uninhabitable attic is 1,070 square feet. A front unenclosed porch and a rear unenclosed porch at 336 square feet of space. The floor area of the primary dwelling is 1,664 square feet, according to the application. The accessory dwelling is 44.6% of the floor area of the existing primary dwelling. This means the size requirement of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows 750 square feet of 40% of total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate in size to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential, our free zoning district. The proposed accessory dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling, and the average setback is used to determine front setback. The average setback is 16.3 inches, according to the plan provided. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is located to the west side of the existing single-family home. Access will be via doors on the front and rear sides of the accessory dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the proposed accessory dwelling on quad plan, 30 Marshfield Avenue, situated mass by Land Plan Inc., dated 9/26/24, with revision through 10/21/2024, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows an existing unpaved driveway and parking to the rear of the proposed accessory dwelling, which appears capable of supporting two cars for the primary dwelling and two cars for the accessory dwelling. Animal parking appears to be provided. The driveway and the parking... The driveway and the parking area will be finished with crushed seashells. Now, the applicant owners have submitted a signed notice of rights statement that will occupy one of the dwellings on completion of the project. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and a private septic system, which must be approved by the board health. Board health will require H-20 loading. The septic area asset will be driven over and parked on. A plan dated 12/13/2024, provided to the board of health, shows the septic tank and distribution loss will be H-20 loaded. The water department has commented that the accessory dwelling unit will require a separate water service. According to the DPW specifications, the water service must be approved and inspected by the water department. Connection and meter fees apply. Eleven, the application meets the standards of the situated zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings special permit.
Do you have a second?
Second. Hold on a second.
I am going to approve the special permit for detached accessory dwelling at 30 Marshville Avenue with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform plans submitted with the application as attached herein to this decision. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one and the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review of the whole floor. The attic of the accessory dwelling will only be used to house mechanical equipment and the storage. It cannot be converted to living space. The living space is confined to the first floor. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1st here. Five, the detached accessory dwelling using, cannot be used as a short-term rental when occupancy expires in 31 days. Six, all federal, state, and local permits must be obtained prior to a building permit being obtained. Seven, all requirements of the board of health, building department, zoning board, appeals, department of public works, fire department, conservation commission, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Eight, the final building plans stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the town planner prior to a building permit being issued for the review of consistency with the elevations and renderings submitted. If the plans differ from the approved plans, approval of the changes by the planning board will be required. Nine, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Ten, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling. Eleven, any lighting installed shall be downlighting and not shed light on a body properties. Twelve, construction shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. weekdays and 8:00 a.m. Saturdays and shall cease related than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction include iteming of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Thirteen, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. If there is an increase in impervious area above 25%, then a stormwater permit will be required. Fourteen, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silt soft or silt fence shall be used as necessary and extended around the limit of work, so disturbance beyond what is shown on the plan is not allowed. Fifteen, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by the Massachusetts Building Code. And new exterior stairs needed to provide primary or secondary means of egress to the accessory dwelling shall be located on the side or rear of the building. Sixteen, at least two private off-street parking spaces shall be available for the use of the occupants of the accessory dwelling, in addition to those parking spaces required for the primary dwelling. Seventeen, no on-street parking by occupants of the primary or accessory dwelling shall be permitted at any time. Eighteen, construction vehicles, equipment shall not be parked, stored, loaded, or unloaded in the street. Least details shall be obtained if necessary as determined by the police department. Nineteen, the planning board may require an onsite inspection of the primary and secondary accessory dwelling for performance to be approved plans and conditions prior to issuance of certification for occupancy of the dwelling. That's it. That's it.
Do you have a second?
Hold on a second. I will vote yes, but I have to tell you, I'm not very happy with this. I think it's too big. I think it's too much. I understand where you're coming from. I really do. But I, I think that in the circumstances, it's almost too big as what I had with Mark. So.
I'll strike your opinion. I understand.
So I will vote yes. I don't know.
So it's a four to one, four to one vote. So it does pass.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So this is a special permit. Make no mistake, this is a special permit. This is not a by right.
You must, you must have owner occupancy.
Owner occupancy is required.
Whatever. And shall be flagged in the letter. Thank you.
We've got to write along to Secretary. A public hearing for special or accessory dwelling at 33 Beaver Dam Road. Done. Good evening, how are you considering?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. My name is Adam Brodsky, a local land use and environmental lawyer, and I represent the applicant Rivermore Development LLC. Michael Reynolds, to my left, to your right, is the manager of the LLC. You know Jed. And then our professional engineer with Atlantic Coast Engineering. And John Teriaki, our project, from Teriaki Designs, is on line. The applicant purchased this property.
So people who are in conversation, isn't this a special permit?
It is.
We've read it last time.
No, this is, you're opening a public hearing.
If you not have something to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in your board. People all read. Too much paper, too. It's hiding. Now, I'm sorry, people.
In accordance with bound general law, chapter 48, section 9 and 11, and the T-2 zoning bylaw, section 5, accessory dwelling special permit, and section 940 referrals, planning board will conduct a public hearing at 7:30 p.m. on Thursday, January 9, 2025, in the select board hearing room at City Tower Hall, 600 Chief Justice Chicago. Subject of the hearing is an application submitted by the applicant owns Rivermore Development LLC for accessory dwelling special permit. For a detached accessory dwelling to be located in an existing dwelling, which will be modified to make the rear setback in size for the accessory dwelling unit, a new single-family primary structure will be created on the lot of 33 Beaver Dam Road, situated in Mass. Property as shown on accessory map lot 515-1-9-7. Plans are available for review, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
But before we start, I would like to make two comments. One, plenty of the thoughts that question. We look at every, every project individually. While I appreciate you going back through your files and finding the this decision from, or I believe, whatever, but it's flower. And I appreciate that. If you look, we risked yourself starting a little bit over the door. The other issue is that I confused about the last page of your letter. When you tell me that you refer to the EOHLC, the South River, I talked about before, but the Affordable Homes Act, this is not coming under the Affordable Homes Act. This is coming under the present bylaw, which means that it must be owner occupied one of those buildings until there is some kind of particular. Or right now, that is what's a struggle. So you can take everybody's.
Thank you, Chair. I only cited to the recent legislation for the public policy which seeks to promote the construction of ADUs within the Commonwealth. We clearly submitted this under the local bylaw. So if I can provide a brief summary as to why we're here, then I'll ask Jed to go over the site plan and then to Teriaki to briefly go through the technical points. The applicant purchased this property in August of 2024, and that the notice indicates seeks to convert the existing dwelling on the property into an ADU and construct a new principal dwelling. Property is located within the R3 zoning district, and the lot area is approximately 15,700 square feet. The lot is lawfully non-conforming, is non-conforming with respect to footage and lot width. The existing dwelling, which is located at the rear of the property, has two bedrooms and otherwise conforms except for rear yard setback. So it's lawfully non-conforming with respect to the rear yard setback. It's too close to the rear property line. Proposing to modify that existing dwelling to reduce it to size to comply with the current ADU bylaw, it will be a one-bedroom unit containing 823 square feet gross and 788 square feet net floor area. And the reduction in size of that dwelling unit eliminates the non-conforming rear setback. So the ADU becomes conforming with the modifications that were proposed. The ADU complies in all respects with your current bylaw. Again, the only thing different, which you've alluded to here, is that we're converting an existing dwelling to an ADU and constructing a new principal dwelling. And you made reference to the planning board's decision in 2012 concerning 562 First Parish Road, where the planning board did just what we're asking this board to do, which allows to take the existing dwelling, convert it into an ADU, and then construct a new dwelling. And as you know, we did provide an owner occupancy letter. I have a personal opinion as to whether the Affordable Homes Act outlawed that requirement for every applications going forward, but we did submit that owner occupancy letter, be compliant with your current bylaw. So that brief introduction, Jed, you want to just go quickly through the site plan, please?
Absolutely. So Jed Haden was the lead project engineer, and he's come here. So we focus on the site plan, I'll bring him. As you can see, the conversion to the proposed ADU is shown in pink at the south side of the property. Proposed primary dwelling is shown on the north side of the property. Jed, maybe we can, you know, the board patch up and make sure they have the right site plan.
Yeah, well, I mean, you don't have anything on a.
No, we were hoping, we were hoping to be able to display things electronically.
Right. No, you have a snowbank. You wanted to display things.
Hey, hard to, to perform to every board's different reply of audio.
If you give us praise, we are going to play them like I meant to.
Thank you. I'll make sure we, if we have to come back, we will.
Thank you. That's it. Problem on your call. Okay.
So Jed, we're sure you got something here.
What do you want to be on?
So this is just the site plan. You keep one of one.
And you've got some.
Yeah.
All right, that's nice. So as you can see, on the, with the north arrow, the top right corner there, the proposed ADU footprint is shown in pink, smaller footprint there. And then the larger primary dwelling is shown on the north side, along with two parking spots next to the primary dwelling, which are hatched in green. Likewise, there's two parking spots, the proposed ADU, the south side of the proposed ADU. The access off Beaver Dam is, is existing. It's basically a shared driveway, so there's no real change there. In terms of utilities, all the utilities are shown on the plan. Attorney Brodsky already went over all the setback requirements. There is no conservation jurisdiction. This is all, this is all upland here. Erosion controls are shown on the plan. That's really all I have in terms of the site plan. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, like the architect, John Teriaki.
And I would note that that shared driveway is the subject of an easement, which benefits the properties to the rear. We're doing nothing, obviously, to impair that easement. So nothing changes regarding access to either this property or to the property behind.
So, so the gas line still staying?
The gas line is going to stay. There's gas proposal property. The owner on the rear, Mr. Ritchie, expressed some concerns about the gas being key tab to his property. We will address his concerns. We're certainly not going to cut off his gas and plan on meeting with utility companies once we proceed with the, you know, planning board to get approval of the project. We also heard his concerns about the overhead wires. Plan on putting those underground as well.
Mr. Brodsky, is this easing on file?
Yes.
It may be referenced in the deed as a part of your separate grant of the.
That's it. It's an easement.
The easement.
Claire, it's an easement.
So John, do you want to go through the, the architectural presentation, please?
Sure. Good evening, John Teriaki, Teriaki Architectural Design and Cohasset. I'm just going to zoom into the floor plans a little bit, if it's okay with the commission, and go, go through the architectural aspects of the to build or the proposed dwelling, accessory dwelling. Here's a bird's eye diagram of the property. This is the shared driveway here perpendicularly to Beaver Dam. Here's the existing structure. And this red is, outline is demarcating the, the portion of the building that's proposed to be demolished. So the front portion of the existing building will remain. And the reason for that is this is a charming little building, and, and the owners would really like to keep it in addition to the, the proposed main house on the front of the property. These are some existing elevations of the structure. So as you approach from the shared driveway, this is the facade you see. It's a one-story building. And then this is the side that's parallel to the driveway. As extent further, and then this is the rear portion, which was a probably later add-on, one-story type extension of the building that we are proposing to take off. So here are the proposed elevations, almost identical, except this rear portion is being reduced. And then just jumping to a zoomed-in view of the site plan. This is turned around 90 degrees so that the north is on the left side now. The interior floor plan of the reduced accessory dwelling, showing the single bedroom and the adjacent spaces essentially remaining the same, the living room, kitchen, screen porch, and a rear entrance. And then next to it is the proposed floor plan of the, the proposed main house for the project. So that's, in essence, the architectural aspects of the dwelling, and I'm happy to elaborate further or answer any questions that the board may have.
Yes, I want to elaborate further, please. I don't agree with Mr. Brodsky's representation of the square footage of the accessory dwelling. Based on plans yesterday from the architect, the gross square footage of the existing dwelling out there is 1,050 square feet. The accessory dwelling is 728 square feet, based on the architect's plans from yesterday. So, because there was a question about the square footage.
I'm happy to be corrected. I believe that those are the numbers of the original application which I had. And I know that Mr. Joseph asked for some additional information, which was provided. So I, I. So I, I, I rely upon the experts and I obviously, I did not provide you with the most up to date information.
So I'm just, those are the numbers that are going to be in any planning board decision. Okay, so I'm just making sure, making clear that those are the numbers. Based on the architect's own plan con- concurred by the assessor. So the assessor did concur with the number for the existing well.
And if I could just add to that real quickly, um, originally. We took the, the footprint of the entire existing building, including this little sunroom, as we called it. Because to us, this appeared finished. However, upon further examination, this room is not conditioned. Even though it has hardwood flooring and it's finished, so that was the difference of the numbers. And that's why the revised numbers that we provided, that shows the red outline is one thousand fifty square feet. As uh, Ms. Ms. Joseph just outlined, and then the, the proposed. The reduced version will be seven hundred twenty eight square feet excluding the screen porch. So those are the correct numbers.
Thank you. Anything else?
Where's the parking for this A D U? I see you're gonna take down a red piece.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have two spaces that will basically be backing into the easement. Is that how that's gonna work?
It's access to the rear of the easement, that's correct, and it's uh, to the uh, that would be the west of the proposed A D U, John? That's, and John's indicating.
Correct, that's the existing driveway.
Yep.
Which is.
So.
There are two parts, one part garage here, the.
That's the. So. And they're very difficult, I don't know how anybody's gonna maneuver those parking spots, technically they're there, I mean, technically they're shown. They're very unmaneuverable.
And especially if somebody parks next to the white car, no one's gonna be able to get out of there.
Jed, what, what is the, this special?
So the, if we have the turning radius, if you really zoom in, it's, you can see the, the curvature in green. So there is the, the turning radius, I, I agree, that appear to be tight. Um, but we do need the parking size requirements, um. In accordance with the specifications of the town, so.
Yeah, but you might need the parking requirement. But I'm talking about the accessibility to the parking spots. Over the easement.
Jed, is it your opinion as a professional engineer that, that would provide safe ingress and egress out of those parking spaces?
Yeah, there's safe access egress, it's, it's fairly open there, um. Now, and the ability to make that turning radius is, is not a problem. Um, and furthermore, uh, when you, when you back up, there is. Example, you know, on the south, we'll call it parking number four, as you can see it there, when you back up. Uh, although that's the property line, there, there is room to, you know, back up and, and make a, a turn uh, in the rear direction. So it would probably be a, you know, one or two point turn, so it's, it's, it is maneuverable, it's slightly, it is tight, I agree.
Not really supposed to be going over somebody else's property to maneuver vehicles.
I, I don't know whether that easement is mutual and extends up.
I think you need to find out. I think you need to find out.
But it is possible to back up into the.
No, I was gonna say, I, I.
You don't have to go on a property back.
And a little cut, okay. Anybody else?
Um, well, this is probably the first of many uh, rounds of permitting that they're going to have to do because. It needs a section six finding and it probably needs stormwater permit too. So this is probably the first round of permitting that they're going to have to deal with because. It, it absolutely needs a section six. It doesn't have the right amount of frontage or lot. So it pre-existed knocking for a lot. And I would be surprised if there's not an increase of twenty five percent in curvaceous. So at some point, there's gonna have to be. Brilliant, it's gonna have to be addressed.
It's, and again, I will, I'll consult with the building commissioner. Um, the proposed dwelling conforms to all dimensional requirements, the only non-conforming is respectable lot. I do not know whether the building commissioner is going to require a section six finding to put a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot.
He told me today at least.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to speak with him. It's his call as to whether or not that results in an intensification of the non-conformity. Since the non-conformity related to the lot, not to the structure, I think an argument can be made that section six finding. It's not required, but it's the building commissioner's fault.
Well, I just said, he focuses guys, and what's everybody has to say.
Sure.
I still would like to know. You have the easement. You're traversing over it. Where does the easement end?
I, I do not know, it extends all over our property, but we're not changing the easement.
I understand that, but where does it end in terms of whose property with this white and black car are? On this picture? Who owns that? Because they.
So that would be Mr. Ritchie. Mr. Ritchie's the one that sold us the property.
Okay, so. You're gonna be backing up into the.
We don't have to back in the property, we can back all the way into the property, our own property right there. So if we backed out of that, number four, number three, we can back in number one or number two in a turn. Very simple.
No, anyway. I'd like that for a bit of a, please, I, I, it's, you're right, it's very tight. And looking at this picture with what you're going to take off. I want something more of what that is going to look like, please.
I guess it would depend on title and what you're driving for cars as well, I mean, any spot could be tight depending on what you're driving. You know, if you're driving a Hummer, that's gonna be a difference that you got.
Oh, come on.
That's true.
I understand that it's true, but that's not something that needs to be dealt with. I mean, this has to meet certain specifications, you have to be able.
But we do meet your requirements.
It says we should carry requirements. Or with these.
Just. Right, so again, the, the parking space for each of the uh, parking spots. More than meets the dimensional requirements. We, I could provide a table for you if you want for that.
I understand that it needs the requirements.
Yeah.
What I'm concerned about is backing out of that spot. Onto the abutist property, because that's what it looks like in this picture.
I haven't seen that picture, but um, there, there is dimensional space to make a two point turn. It can tell just based on the spacing here, to maneuver out of the driveway and stay on the property.
I would like to see something more than what you have here.
No, absolutely, we, we, we have, yeah, we, we have uh, diagrams that can show the, the turning um, and how many point turn that needs to be. I believe it's two points and you can, you can actually drive out without even having to. You can back up, make a one point turn, back up and you pull up.
Get a normal size.
Get a normal size, so it's maneuverable, I agree, it's tight, but I can provide that, no problem. Done that on the past projects.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we could add a tandem driveway to meet the bylaws as well to make it easier. If that wants to give more room for someone to park.
Okay, I understand that. Yes. All right. Anybody else here?
Uh, so this is gonna be a special permit, the owner has to uh, live on the property.
So I thought the question about that, I do remember when my very first meetings was with Mr. Retto's. Where accessory dwellings on half park. When you uh, when you signed an authorized piece of paper. Um, and you're gonna also live in this house, I'm a little.
I didn't say I was gonna live here, I'm just a managing partner with S L C, we have two other partners and one who does plan to live there.
Okay, but it will be an owner occupied, the guys who have.
And we do so.
Because your name is on the thing.
And I am still living where I say I live. My parents are still very happy in that accessory dwelling.
Um, because when I looked at the uh, realization, you had your name replaced.
Yeah.
Black stick, I see, they can live in.
That's not. I can understand that, but I am living in seven all park and I send the people on. Thank you.
Gavin?
Technically, it meets the bylaw, I mean, it's uh, so technically, I think the board should approve this accessory dwelling. Um, you know, I've written a draft decision with numerous conditions. Um, and you know, I. I think the board should approve it.
And you'll be back for show for a couple of days. You'll have a copy of that, no? Back in the day, we had someone from before us. That had a house, I think it was on one of the avenues. In the Bunnitt Penitent, you know? And they wanted to turn that into an accessory and build.
Okay.
And build a primary. And it'd be confirmed with the board.
I, I understand, I understand that, and I sought an opinion from town council. And town council did advise that you should approve this. That, that, in his opinion, it didn't, that this A D U. Would be subordinate and it would meet the size requirement for the future primary dwelling. And the first step in this process would be to get the A D U permitted. Because you can't have two primary buildings on a lot. So therefore, you have to permit the accessory dwelling for. I, I, and I, I totally understand where you're coming from. And it's, it's just like everything else is not precedent, you know? And but, and I specifically asked that question because I knew that question could come.
Well, it just seems interesting. That, well, it had to do with sewer, but I'm not gonna.
And I just want you to size, I think.
Size of the lot.
The size of the lot.
Yeah.
The house is a forty two hundred square foot house? Is that one there? No, the new one.
This proposed is forty three four.
Right, and then there was a question and. The septic system was failure, so that there was a connection to.
Right, but sewer is not your domain.
I know, but you know what?
Who can you? What I've done is I've done a draft condition, they have to provide. Proof of septic, proof of septic sewage capacity and whatever, they have to something prior to a building permit. But we wanna see it prior to them filing for the building permit, which they need for the building permit anyway. So they have to have either sewer or septic in order to get a building.
Pretty detailed. So they were given a hookup, an emergency hook up.
Right, correct. Correct for, for the existing dwelling.
Because this is a public area, is it not?
Yep.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to say something? Yes, sir, please identify your name and your address, please.
James P. Corsey, forty eight Arbor X Road. Um, forgive my ignorance, but it just seems odd that. A dwelling that's an access, accessory to a dwelling that hasn't been permitted or approved is being approved. It, it sounds like, you know, from what I'm hearing, you've got town council that's given an opinion, but it's, it's unique. It's, it's unprecedented, is that the word that we're using?
We don't set precedent here, we use every.
I think the words that were used, you, you said you had an opinion, but it was unprecedented, I would say. Is, is there a process to, to get a different opinion? Um, it doesn't, you know, seem relevant to me to set precedent on, on, on something of this nature.
We, you do not set precedent, I think that you, you can carry the slope, whatever, we will get every project individually. Uh, we spent quite some time with town council, who gave us an opinion uh, about why this should be approved. Um, they need all of. The bylaws that we have about an accessory dwelling inability in primary. I know it's a little backwards, I know.
Well, I, I have a few more questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Was the, the permit sought for sewer hookup, was the, was it identified as a primary dwelling or a, or accessory dwelling?
Go ahead, better information, you're weak.
Well, I think I know the answer, if, if they're, they're asking to be an accessory dwelling today. And so they applied for the permit as if it was a primary dwelling, so. You know, I'd suggest that, that the manner in which the, the sewer hookup was um. What was procured was um.
Somewhat disingenuous.
Misleading, misleading.
Somewhat disingenuous.
So.
Is there a separate hookup for this house they have to make?
There would be.
We can't speak to what the seller did or did not do, we purchased a property.
Pardon?
Okay, excuse me. Okay.
If I could ask, the, the sewer hookup permit was the, the seller's?
The board of selectmen gave it to them.
To the sellers or to the buyers?
Sellers, sellers.
That said, the. The sewer hookup is, was. This being an accessory dwelling was not part of the equation, part of the permit, but now. Um. You're gonna approve an accessory dwelling to a primary dwelling that doesn't exist. That is not permitted, that has. Uh, a known uh. Need for. A variance, uh, maybe the wrong term, but in terms of the front. I understand that.
There's no variance required and I respectfully suggest that the sewer permit issue is really not before this.
And when you hear our decisions, sir, you will see that we cover a lot of that due to the decision. Hopefully to, to alleviate any of your concerns, but um. They will be paid an additional, I don't know, was it sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars for some hookup now, of course they were.
Yes, I mean, the comment from the sewer division is that, you know, if they have, if there's gonna be sewer here. And it'll be two sewer units at sixteen thousand each.
I just have a big problem with all of this, I really do, Karen, I, I have. It's ass backwards.
I, I respect your opinion and I, I'm not saying I don't disagree with you. I, I'm just, I'm trying to run a draft decision that was, I thought, the best legal decision for the board to give. I mean, if you don't want to go by the draft decision, then, you know, that, that's the board's prerogative. But I, I tried to ask the questions of town council that I thought that, that the board would ask. And sewer is not our prerogative.
I understand.
But you can require them to provide proof of sewage. I mean, or septic, septic sewer prior to a building permit, you absolutely can require that.
That's a lot of discussion.
Any more questions, sir?
I, I did just wanna make note that in, you know, I understand there's a perk test done um, for the. Current uh, dwelling, um.
The little house.
Yeah, the little house, every property that abuts that property has had perk tests, everyone has. So just a, just a point to.
Edward Anthony, for example, Beaver Dam, Rob, or the butter, and uh. I don't understand how if one, that, that was given to the main house, it's now an A D U. And it's getting hooked up to sewer. The new, brand new primary house, which is the new construction, it's also gonna get hooked up to sewer. That, that makes no sense to me, particularly since there are people who have family systems, right next door. And they can't be unscored, so.
But that's not complaining for the decision.
I understand, I just wanna hear that. Because there's plenty of property for a leaching field and septic system.
You need to talk to the sewer commissioners.
That would be the board select.
Sure.
Anybody else have any concerns? Anybody else liking?
No, no.
All right, any of you else with the board map? That's us?
No, I just like to echo what Sir Ryan said, it's just facing at the time, way of doing things. Everything on.
We, we, I, I do not disagree, it's not how you typically do it. But it's my opinion that it's perfectly lawful and in performance for zoning bylaw. And town council also agrees. And town council also agrees that it's perfectly lawful.
That doesn't mean I think so.
Well, it doesn't.
No, man.
Don't.
On that cheerful note, can I ask you something? In the draft, a draft, is it, do we reference the first house that's been built? And it has to be certain size, right? I'm sorry. How how much is this?
What we, I mean.
How much is the accessory dwelling? How big is it?
Forty-two hundred and change.
Those are.
Accessory, accessory, seven hundred and seventy-four.
Seven twenty-eight square feet.
Okay.
Seven twenty-nine, you're with the.
All right, everyone ready here?
Yes.
I move to make the following findings of fact.
You need to get that kid here.
Sorry, put on my schoolteacher voice.
Go on, the children's voice.
They saw. Okay. I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on November twenty, twenty twenty-four, applicant Rivermore Development LLC applied for special permit for accessory dwelling in detached structure at the property with thirty-three Beaver Dan Road. Two, according to the deed, property thirty-three Beaver Dan Road is owned by Rivermore Development LLC. Three, based on the application submitted to the project, the applicant maintains floor area of detached accessory dwelling will be seven hundred twenty rows square feet with an unheated porch not included in this number. The applicant will be demolishing three hundred twenty-three square feet of the existing structure, which is one thousand fifty square feet, according to the applicant's plan and reaffirmed by the assessor, so that it complies with a rear setback of one feet. The applicant proposes to build a new primary dwelling of four thousand two hundred eighty-four square feet and use the modified existing dwelling as a detached accessory dwelling. The applicant maintains total floor area of the existing dwelling ADU is nineteen point six percent of the total floor area of the new dwelling, and it is recalculated at approximately seventeen percent and is less than forty percent. So it complies with the existing bylaw section five thirty point two F. This meets the size requirements five thirty four two F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows seven hundred fifty square feet on forty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling will be subordinate to the code single-family home. For the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will only be one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R three zoning district. The proposed accessory dwelling structure will be all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling when the when the portion of the existing dwelling is removed from the rear yard setback. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located at the rear of the new primary dwelling structure. Access will be via doors on the front, fourth, and rear side side of the accessory dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the plan of the plan of land located thirty-three Beaver Dan Road prepared for Rivermore Development LLC dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four shows the location of the existing primary dwelling slash the proposed ADU and the location of the proposed primary dwelling. The plan shows a proposed HMA driveway with two parking spots for the primary dwelling and two for the accessory dwelling, and parking appears to be provided. Nine, the applicant owner has committed a signed notarized statement that he will occupy one of the dwellings upon completion of the project until such time as the owner occupancy requirements in the zoning bylaw may change. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water, and a new sewer line is shown on the site with no connection to the street. The water department has commented that the service line is indicated in the records to be three-quarter inch steel. The service line needs to be replaced according to City D P W specs one inch C T S. The accessory dwelling will require a separate water service according to City D P W and suspected by the water department. Connection and meter fees apply. Eleven, the application meets the standards of the city of zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling special permit. Just two seconds.
Discussion.
Discussion. Okay, all right, never mind. I'm all set. So I figured it out. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second. I can't second. I read.
All right, go ahead.
Move, I move to approve discussion permit for detached accessory dwelling thirty-three Beaver Dan Road with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on twelve seventeen September. One, if separating changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction self shall substantially conform to plans submitted with the application, including proposed residence thirty-three Beaver Beaver Dan Road, situat mass by Tri Happy Architectural Design dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, consisting of sheet A E two point four, existing elevations of existing dwelling sheet A two point four, proposed elevations of existing dwelling sheet A one point one, proposed first floor plan of house and accessory dwellings dwelling sheet A two point five, proposed exterior elevation of main house and ADU, existing and proposed dwelling floor plan stated seventeen twenty-one seven twenty twenty-five. A plan of land located at thirty-three Beaver Dan Road, situat mass, prepared for Rivermore Development LLC by Atlantic Coast Engineering dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor plan area, floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. The living space is confined to compliant to the first floor. The unheated porch is not considered for the floor floor area. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one special unit, one of the dwelling units must be provided by March first yearly as the special permit was applied to this project. God, the detached accessory dwelling cannot be used as a short-term rental with occupancy of less than thirty-one days. Six, all federal, state, and local permits must be obtained to prior to a building permit being obtained. Seven, all requirements of the select board, border health, building department, zoning board fields, department public works, fire department, conservation commission, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Eight, the final building plans stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the town planner prior to a building permit being issued for review for consistency with the elevations and rendering submitted. If plans differ from the approved plans, approval of finishes by the planning board will be required. Now, in the final step, final site plans stamped by a registered land surveyor shall be provided to the town planner prior to a building permit being issued for review of consistency with the plan of land submitted for approval. If the plans differ from the approved plans, approval of the changes by the planning board will be required. Ten, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Eleven, permits for handling sewage, septic must be provided to the planning board prior to application for building permitting. While water connection must meet all requirements of the D P W, one mission for the accessory dwelling. Thirteen, any lighting installed shall be downlighting, cannot shed light on abutting properties. Fourteen, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven PM on sun or sunset, whichever is closing. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Fifteen, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. If there is an increase in impurious area over twenty-five percent, then a stormwater permit will be required. Sixteen, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation leaving the site during construction. Silk saw or silk fence shall be used as necessary and extended around the living court, so disturbance beyond notice shown on the plan is not allowed. Seventeen, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by Massachusetts Building Code and new exterior stairs needed to provide primary or secondary means of egress, that the accessory dwelling shall be located on the side or rear of building. Eighteen, at least two private off-street parking spaces shall be available for use by occupants of the accessory dwelling in addition to those parking spaces required of the primary dwelling. Nineteen, no on-street parking by occupants of the primary or accessory dwelling shall be permitted in time. Twenty, construction vehicles slash equipment shall not idle, be parked, stored, loaded, or unloaded on the street. Police to you tells shall be obtained if necessary as determined by the police department. Twenty-one, the planning board may require an onsite inspection of the primary and accessory dwelling for conformance to approved plans and conditions prior to the issuance of certi- certification of occupancy for the accessory dwelling. Twenty-two, the accessory dwelling has to be ready for occupancy concurrently with the primary dwelling.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We want.
No, thank you very much.
Very.
People are done with. Hey, I want to, my job. But I've been late back for, you know, I told probably somebody to give a burger, you know, I didn't get along with your phone. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm great, Matt. Thank you.
I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I I. Right, so we do have another public hearing, and this just keeps getting better and better. It's a better area or.
It's not a special color.
The public hearing for the planning board fee schedule. We'll do much. I'm sure the gentleman tomorrow will buy a drop of wine. Almost have to, you're up too much.
We want too much money.
Say what?
The public hearing, we we discussed the fees.
We are determined.
Yes, we're on the way even more.
Karen needs a raise.
It is public hearing.
It is public hearing.
How about legal act?
Okay. And notice hereby given pursuant to Master Law's chapter forty-one, section eighty-one, pew.
Pew.
Pew. That a public hearing will be held by the city planning board on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty five, at eight o'clock PM, or a late. To consider amendments to the city planning board fee schedule. The current fee schedule and complete text of the proposed changes to the fee schedule are available for inspection during the normal hours of business of the city town hall and the offices of town clerk, planning board, town office, and etc., etc., etc. Written comments on the fee schedule changes will be also decentered by the planning board prior to the public hearing. So, there you go.
Karen.
Um so nobody submitted any comments on the fee schedule. Surprise. Thanks. Thanks, John, the feedback from the planning board that raised a few of the themes because the amount of work is is substantial on these, so.
It only helps, Steve.
We also put in cycling administrator for you for an ADU.
Yes.
So I put exactly, we'll come in.
Kill me.
And we put major cycling review at twelve fifty. Cycling review a thousand, a waiver still uh two fifty, and stormwater permits went up to three fifty. Per the direction of the board.
Yes, we are.
Seventy-two dollars and fifty cents?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, clarify.
So no, that Karen, you just change it, critical of my work, it's getting, you're getting busy here, lots of lots to do. Uh we look around, we get these departments, what with other people, you're better past, don't be clients, and it's.
What's the deal?
I know, call, call, calls, oh. Make an affordable house a little bit, I'm like, what do you want to say, guys? Too much.
So I'll go to the general fund, I can use it for capital spending.
There you go.
As always, I don't think it's the fees that are a big deal. I think the big deal generally becomes what it's consulting stuff. It's good. And again, I'll just reiterate, it's really expensive for some of the consultants that are out there. That's unfortunate, but.
Well, you remember when I said McCorcy? The backbone of a lot of this is we notice everybody wants to make a lot of money. That's just what it comes to, and we got a little piece of my head, and everybody wants to build in stuff, so. Part of my job is to control that. So we hired the best consultants that we can, and that is our project, which you know, um they haven't let us but not a hundred percent have not let us down the wrong road, which most of the time everybody, we do have to.
But we. It's unusual that sometimes, and it's not just this board, but in front of conservation as well, as developers will come in and will hire weapons, scientists to go flag weapons or do something. We're actually paying almost the same amount, if not more, to have a town's consultant go and review what's been done. And that's just, to me, that's just unfair.
We don't get those ones, so. Anything else, Tim? No?
No.
Washington.
Anybody on the line, have a.
No, I don't give a, I don't know who would, I guess, is there anybody on the line that would like to speak to this?
I don't know if you can talk to him. She's not here.
Well, I don't have to do that, too.
They can raise their hands, though.
Yeah, no.
I don't see any.
I don't see you have to be raised, but I don't know how to.
Our developers help this.
I don't know how to make that, I don't know how to make that work, Joe. You have any more paper?
I'm looking.
All right, so come on, you have it, Mark. His hair's something.
He's got.
She's putting giant letters on it.
So I'm on it. Okay. I move to approve the proposed planning board fee schedule effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Okay, planning board fee schedule. A and R, a form A plan, two hundred fifty dollars plus one hundred dollars per billable lot. Primary plan, six hundred plus.
Elimination.
Prelimination.
You know, you can abbreviate this by saying as written.
As yes.
As written.
As posted.
As posted.
As posted.
Move as posted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Double. Now we have another.
The.
Out of public hearing, it's out of public hearing. No, it's good. This is a sure we would doubt change the project. You should file it, but Curtis escapes. The monitor should go.
It's not an ADU, so you'll be happy about that.
Oh, we don't know that yet, too.
Yeah, no, I think you'll be pretty happy.
I don't give a really pod cut.
Yeah, just for the record, Steve V. Orland, um I got involved in this, wanted to try to help the board get this thing closed out and put it behind you. Everybody knows the history of the project. Uh no good deed goes unpunished. It's a a ton of work. Karen went to bat as well to pull stuff out from old files and try to help me get this thing done, so. She spent a lot of time on it. I spent a tremendous amount of time on it. And I think she put a letter out to the board uh with eight items that were on there. There were two items as of the other day that weren't complete. Um she now has the letter for the in from the in, signed by the engineer. Uh as you know, the engineer had retired, designed the project. Uh ended up going to Bridgewater, I think. Uh so uh Mr. Maravito's office was purchased by Grady Associates, and Rick Grady ended up scamming it as the engineer. Paul had signed it as a surveyor, so he corrected that. So we got the engineer, that's in the record, and I did go through all of the inspection reports, and when you do a subdivision, there are seven required inspections. They were out there forty times under subdivisions, according to the numbers that were in the inspection dates that were out there. So I think we've completed everything that's on there, and hopefully the board will just release the covenant and be done, release stuff.
It's not, it's not covered. We are holding.
The shirt, the shirt.
The shirt.
We're holding a fifty. We're holding fifty thousand dollar bond, which expires next month anyway, so I mean, this is why I wanted it done before then. I got the final PDF of the as-built today. So to be clear, I think the project is done.
Mr. Bill, do you need to understand that just because we approved this, that it does not include three segments of the. Mr. Bill, do you understand that just because we approved this, that it does not need street acceptance other than.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but, uh,
Exactly what I was just saying, I don't have that yet.
I actually have been working a little bit with Bill Smith, who is the trustee, whatever you would call it, for the association out there. Um, there has been a plan that was prepared, uh, by, not great, by Maravido's office. Uh, it has a couple of discrepancies in it that those are going to be taken care of. It has to do with easements and the description of some of the easements. Um, computers being what they are, when they implemented everything into this new plan that they just did for the ASBill, it, it somehow the computer changed some of these numbers by some tenths or something like that. So, I went down, we pulled the original easement plan that's on record to registry, which is page eleven of the original subdivision plan. So, everybody who has a lot out there that has an easement on it, those easement descriptions have to be exact when they go in if the town is going to accept the road. So, they're going to go through that, change that, they've already submitted, I guess preliminarily for street acceptance.
I just want to make sure that they understood that this is not starting, that's a whole separate.
And this has nothing to do with the developers, but Mr. Smith is a great guy, he helped me through some of this. And, and they actually stepped to the plate because they did some of the things that needed to be complete out there as far as uh, some of the landscaping, cut some trees that were down, they were great to work with through the process, that they helped. Uh, as you know, financially, uh, this was kind of a disaster and it's still, everything got done, uh, you know, Doug Sharon was helping as well and he stepped up financially, he's going to hopefully get some money back from the other two that started the project.
We did not have.
Or, or longer.
They fixed the stone walls. Yes, they did.
Stone walls, every, every picture, everything.
Yeah, I sent you a picture of that and so, and they painted the hydrant and everything, so.
I agree.
Everything, I believe, I really believe everything is done.
And of course, you got paid the big bucks for this too, didn't you? I know.
I know. You know what?
Thank you very much.
I made the comment that I was going to help do it and I did that, and the board does a lot for me.
It was a motion.
I move to determine that the construction and installation of the Curtis Estates flexible open space definitive subdivision plan has been completed according to the rules and regulations of the planning board and the bylaws of the town of Citu and the remaining fifty thousand dollars charity bond can be released.
So, I'm in favor. I'm going to go right now, never proving another one of those ever again.
But I, I will say that in going through this process, this is probably the most difficult one to try to do, but the subdivision regulations are being completed, okay? Some of the things that are done in here, like, like how you set N A V D eighty-eight compared to N G V D twenty-nine, which are in the regulations, so they've been updated, these plans have been updated to new standards. Uh, and the way you transfer the information doesn't go by disc anymore, it goes other ways.
So, you need to really say all that stuff, they're, they're.
But I'm just, no, the reason for saying that.
They did the right stuff.
Right.
They brought it, they brought it up to the standards of today.
Excellent.
And ignored some of the, um, of stuff that's not my, okay, but, you know.
Well, thank you.
And my reason for saying that was because Karen was working with me and understood that these things were not the right way, so we corrected it as best we could to match.
Sure. One thing, the subdivision regulations is a monumental task and requires a public hearing, so we don't really have, we don't have a.
We have a debate.
You want to go to the next one?
No.
We'll do that enough for each time.
Thank you very much.
Very much, next is.
I know, that's well.
Oh, business, no business, yada, 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 we do not have a, we keep on, um, somewhere in his mess.
It is, no. It's here, I know it's here, it's everything is here. I mean, well, I got it.
I mean, I have to spend all of it.
It seems interesting.
There's a lot of, you know, busy. I move to approve the following requisitions for sixty-five ninety-two to Karen Joseph's Citu Town Planner for mileage reimbursement from October one to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Three thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars forty cents to Chesley Consulting Services for the initial review of the submitted documents, data, site visit, site plan review, mileage and final review related to the project at three forty here in a row. Three hundred five dollars to Chesley Consulting Services in the amount of three hundred five dollars for the short list of issues and presentation to the planning board on December twelfth, twenty twenty four related to the project at three forty here in a row.
Second, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, please, so, dealer, okay, so we need to, we're going to try and monitor this on a new committee?
So moved.
All in favor? It's a nice.
I want it.
Yeah, it's a really nice job. Okay, uh, we have any, do you have anybody moving this on?
It was the holidays, we live.
Oh, I'm just, that's it, it's right here, the thing I have to ask. Um, I, I do, uh, well, I did. I listened to, uh, a bunch of issue the other night, um, and I have a question for Mr. Snow. Um, they're building more houses on Bluewood Road, right up at the railroad track, I mean, right on the railroad track, Woodland.
Woodland?
Yeah.
You're kidding, that's all.
Got this.
Oh, well, they, they, they comes, except there are two mettling crossings that are going to cause them all kinds of frustration. But I'm going to tell you, I thought, and I have a question out to Frank, some of that land is part of a land swap for the safety complex. So, I'm not really sure that that is not approaching on what was there for that safety complex.
So, spectrum of progress, I think.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so these two pieces were bought, but right next to nothing, but literally, they know the train comes flying, shakes all the china, oh my god, I'm not.
I own a house right on the other side of tracks.
Oh?
I own a house right on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's backing up to Lawson basically, it's on the other side, wow.
Yeah.
How about the house on Holland Street, right on the trash?
My little trash, yeah.
That's, that's the worst one.
The little work, yeah.
It's being all we have.
Okay, it's just, it's just all, it's a disaster.
So, Karen, doing the planning development report, this is our longest meeting we've had forever.
Um, you do it, you should expect long meetings for the next multiple meetings.
I know.
So, as I sent you the S J C case for Milton, so I hope you all have read that.
Yep.
Um, I briefly discussed with town council what that means for Citu right now and at the moment, we can just assume we're still in interim compliance, was his opinion. Uh, we've submitted all our materials, we just have to wait till they come up with real guidelines. Probably the same thing, but, you know, where we have those that were in interim compliance, yeah.
So, can, I asked Karen, so, I know that there was a problem when Marshfield did not comply with the F T A. So, this is going to force them to comply, so I'll stay for seven dollars, a little gahoon stuff, presumably because we share a bashful, will get the most data. Only, who knows?
Well, didn't it indicate that they have to, people that are out of compliance. And you're what? Right? I mean, they, but the regulations that that might have been, they do, so now they're, they're not not really out of compliance, but they got to redo that.
Right, they have to do it, if you go dead not to do anything, then, you know, I don't know what they're going to do, but right now for us, I just, I'm going to assume we're still in interim compliance and, you know, we've submitted all our stuff, we've been made since the end of August for some type of decision, they won't give a decision, uh, we probably won't give a decision for nine, couple months.
We think the legal helps, it was made against the S J C case, so. Does that work, they work cool, we had to give it to them.
I think, I think, bring to the next one.
Okay, okay, listen, they got so old, they hesitate, I see we put all the work in, they wouldn't even know that, I mean, they got so.
We submitted comments on the, the grades, um, and, you know, so, um, the A D U strategy is to, you know, we'll have continued public hearing on the twenty third and it will do the continued public hearing on the thirteenth as well. So, hopefully we can fine tune the grades, aff- I fine tune what we propose zoning after the rates come out. Um, and still be in a timely manner to get stuff for the launch. Um, we remain very, very busy, um, multiple new projects submitted, uh, we have two schools. Um, we have other private projects that have been submitted as well, so we remain extremely busy.
Do we know when the, how the lease deal is coming?
We have it, we are going to advertise the public hearing February thirtieth. So, we'll have the continued zoning, public hearing first, and then we'll have the school app. You want me to switch the order? No, I don't think so, I would think you'd want to be sharp with the zoning.
Yeah.
Um, and as you notice, I ha- I just schedule everything every half hour and because it is what it is, you guys, we can't go back to the time where you waited for an hour because somebody didn't show up.
Yeah.
I mean, so, um, next, next meeting, in two weeks, we have, um, have the continued zoning, we have small cell, we have inlay and we have site plan review for A D O's very coming.
Okay, okay.
So, it's very busy meeting.
Yes, they go to design review, yes.
Design review is next week for, you were referred to report again, it's on, you know, that meeting is.
Oh, is. Got the.
We try back rule of rights.
It's near the, it's near the.
It's more like, well, I believe it's. Oh, yes. So, it's time for, uh.
We got, we got, we got that, this. We got horrible, we're like.
Anybody got any questions on anything?
Nope.
Uh, we know, we got the traffic report, industry force, you have it today.
Oh, yeah.
Let me ask some questions.
Can, can, can I ask, you go to, like, you go to, do we have this discussion in here, or we already had that discussion, would they ever redo that, that line? Because.
Oh, okay, I think, is, is that, is that, could you add?
I plan to, okay.
Please.
They would talk about that. There, there might be a rule of that, they do back up. I understand, I've been watching it and, yes. It's traffic. I was expecting to see two units at four thirty in the small conference room, where is that?
I don't know.
So, I'll be there.
I was expecting to see.
So, just might be, there may be a reason for that, there may be an M B T A or like a train reason.
Yeah.
I've been curious about that.
I know. Okay. All right.
So, we remain busy and, you know, we really need every time we come to.
Yes. We'll, we'll be honest, yeah. That will be, I mean, all right. I will, if you can, I'm not sure.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.